I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ralston, seconds. Please vote. Discussion? Please vote.
I just got it.
Yeah, I just got it. There was a. There was a. It says there's an error.
Mine says change vote. What's going on? I hit it again. It says change vote. Oh, no, I'm okay. Did I vote?
I did.
Okay. All right.
May you say that they were able to vote without objection or disagree.
Okay, without objection, we will approve the motion in order to approve the closed session agenda. Moving on to the motion to enter closed session. Do I have a motion to enter closed session?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, that the school board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss, consider, assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and resignation of specific employees, appointees, or officers of our school board, under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Two, to discuss and consult with legal counsel regarding for religious exemptions pertaining to specific students under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A2 and 8. Three, to discuss legal counsel, take action on the placement, reassignment, and disciplinary appeals of specific students under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A2 and 8. Four, to discuss with division counsel specific legal matters requiring to advise or counsel actual probable litigation where discussed such matters would adversely affect the negotiation of litigating posture of our board, under Virginia Sections 2.2-2711A7 and 8. And five, to consult with staff, discuss qualifications of the candidates for student representative to the school board, under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-2711A1 and 2.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ralston, seconds. Any discussion? Do I have, we'll go by ayes. If you're willing to go into closed session, give me an aye.
It's okay.
All right, we'll try it again.
Vote is five yes, three absent.
Okay. The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session, return open session in approximately one hour. Thank you. The Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. We do have two closed session action items. 7.01, parent appeal of OSMAP recommendation, reassign student. We'll do that first. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Satterwhite.
I move that based upon its review of the administrative record and the reassignment appeal of student SR20-001, the Prince William County School Board approve the student's interim reassignment to the CBI Evening Program on Monday evenings and to the CBI Remote Program the remainder of the week, pending a review hearing by OSMAP following the student's December 13, 2019 court date, at which the time OSMAP shall determine whether that placement shall continue and for how long, whether another student alternative education placement is appropriate, and/or whether the student is eligible to return to a traditional school setting, the location of which shall be determined by OSMAP.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston, seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Parent appeal, 7.02, parent appeal of OSMAP recommendation for the placement of student PLC20-001. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ral, Jessie.
I move that based on the review of the administrative record and the placement appeal of student PLC20-001, the Prince William County School Board grant the appeal and reassign the student to Independence Non-Traditional School.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Ralston.
I second.
Ms. Ralston, seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Thank you. We will move on to 801, approval of the closed session consent agenda. Motion's in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3712, the closed session of our school board meeting of November 6, 2019 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ralston, seconds. Discussion? Please vote.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Close session certification. A motion's in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3712, the closed session of our school board meeting of November 6, 2019 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ralston, seconds. Discussion? Please vote.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Thank you. In response to the community request to hear more about the many good things happening in our school division and our schools, we will continue to kick off our meetings this school year with the Positively PWCS presentation. I am continually amazed by the innovative technology being used in our classrooms. Tonight's Positively PWCS highlights the work our schools are doing with Minecraft. That's right, Minecraft. Superintendent Dr. Walts will introduce our presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Latif and members of the board. As someone who has been a personal witness to high school students in an AP class at Battlefield High School using Minecraft, I'm very excited about tonight's Positively PWCS presentation. A.J. Phillips, our Director of Information Technology Services, is here tonight to share with us a little about what our students are doing in the classrooms with Minecraft. A.J.?
Thank you, Dr. Walts, Chairman Latif, school board members. I'd like to introduce to you tonight Timothy Cruz. He's our admin coordinator for instructional technology, and he's going to share with you our instructional technology vision and the impact that examples like Ms. Karimer does in the classroom. Tim?
Hi, good evening. So the mission of our office is always to build our capacity within our teachers so that all of our students in the division can have really powerful and deep learning in a way that challenges them to solve authentic problems, collaborate, and to communicate effectively, and draw upon their own creativity. And through this work, we seek to develop all of our students into future-ready citizens. I am honored tonight to share with you and highlight one example of how student learning is being reimagined at one of our world-class high schools. I'm pleased to introduce Amy Kramer, History and Social Sciences teacher at Battlefield High School, to discuss how her students are leveraging virtual environments, as Dr. Walts alluded to, Minecraft, for really true, deep, authentic learning.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. I want to start with an observation. Education has had a love-hate relationship with gaming for many, many years. Our students are always on their cell phones playing this app or something else. They're glued to their Xboxes. This is the natural position of the teenage animal. I have started my journey with gaming, and I'm going to date myself here, with my Atari in the early 1980s, with my love affair of Pac-Man, and I stayed on that game until I reached the final level with only three lives. Thank you. And I have continued that love affair with gaming, and I have to admit this, even at my age, with my Nintendo Switch. So as an individual and as an educator, I began to ask myself, what is it about gaming that keeps drawing us in, or more importantly, our students? So I asked an expert in the field. I asked my 13-year-old daughter. And she said, Mom, it's simple. Gaming gives us the opportunity to overcome challenges, to beat the bad guy, to be sucked in by the story, and eventually succeed, to win. Lightbulb moment, I said. Wait a minute. In my classroom, do I not challenge my students? Do I not set down obstacles? Do I not want them to succeed and to win? And so the Minecraft project was born. The idea that I had was simply this: My world is the ancient world. I bring my students all the way back to Paleolithic societies, cavemen, and I take them all the way to the Renaissance achievements of Europe. I don't want them to remember simple facts about one civilization or the other. I want to take them on the journey of human development. At the end of the course, do they understand what it was that made us who we are today? We advance, we develop, we invent new technologies. We see civilizations, time and time again in the past, develop sustaining civilizations that support a growing population. And so the challenge I laid down was can my students build their own civilization from scratch? And thankfully, my expert 13-year-old told me, the game was already obvious: Minecraft. And so I said to my students, in survival mode only, you must build from scratch, a civilization that would be very similar to the Bronze Age and make it interactive. They took on the challenge and were more than excited to build their Bronze Age civilizations in a virtual world where they engage with one another, and they didn't disappoint. So I'd like to share with you that video, if we can. They began with agriculture, sustainable irrigated crops to support their small villages, but they go beyond that, as you're about to see. This small village also developed in the Bronze Age, a temple, as you see to the left, to their own gods that they invented based on the nature and their environment that they built in. From there, they were inspired by Mesopotamian steppe pyramids to design them at the center of their civilizations based on their own unique characteristics invented, and built roadways to connect to the center of their villages. They even created interactive marketplaces full of merchants, artisans, Bronze Age metalworkers, doing the same thing they learned in class but in the real world. They eventually developed and interacted through the trade systems that they saw and learned about in the classroom. They built citadels, fortified centers to protect and defend these Bronze Age civilizations as they knew from class warfare was a common problem. And at the height of their achievement, they even went so far to build a colosseum to entertain their own population and glorify their culture with fighters ready to engage at a moment's notice. What I take away from this project, not only the passion and the constant excitement that came to class every day as they built these worlds, is they didn't just learn what one particular ancient civilization did or another. They learned the story of human development over time, and they were given that challenge in that gaming attitude that they love so much, and they succeeded. So I would argue to you that gaming is not our enemy. In the right hands, gaming is our ally for education. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Sure, Ms. Jessie.
I know very little about gaming, but I am just so impressed with the challenge that you gave to your students, the hands-on, the problem-based learning activities, and they will learn. One of my friends is Mike Garcia. He builds homes. And he and I were chatting one day, and he said, do you think a child would learn to build a house if you gave him a worksheet or if you let him build a house? Which one do you think would stick with him? And I think what you've done tonight epitomizes that. Thank you very much for sharing with us and sharing the story, your own personal stories. Thank you.
Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you. I love the last comment you made, so it took me a second. Well, questions were coming up. In the right hands, gaming is our ally in education. I love that. Watching the video was like watching two of my boys in their worlds they've created in Minecraft and the elaborate world they've created. And so thank you so much for blending education with what is definitely our kids' interests. I have three of my four kids who are very much into gaming, and two of them are Minecraft people. So thank you. This was fascinating. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right, so I would like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. We have Reverend Cozy, the invocation. So we have Reverend Cozy Bailey, the First Mount Zion Baptist Church in Dumfries, will give the invocation at the request of Lily Jessie of the Okeechobee district. Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, and good evening. Please pray with me. Mighty God, we come to you this evening with bowed heads and humbled hearts as our symbol of reverence to your unmatched power and sovereignty and your unmerited grace and love. We thank you for this board seated before us, eight members, chosen by us and certified by you, to do all that they can for this community's most precious commodity, our children. We ask that you continue to guide them as only you can, renewing them a right spirit to always focus on assuring our children's academic excellence, move them to continue their efforts to address the special needs of some and the basic needs of all. We also pray a blessing on our superintendent and his staff, and ask that you enjoin them also to do their best to help our children achieve their best. We ask that you guide and temper the tongues of those who will come forward this evening to address this board, that they may speak with articulation and respect in their efforts to assist this body. But finally, Lord, when all is said and done, when we have done all that you have asked us to do, we call upon your mighty hand to fill the gaps of our mortality with the divine supernatural power that only you can bring. This is our prayer in your great name. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Next, we'll have, how about the students from Rosa Parks come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on, we will do the approval of the public meeting agenda. Motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ralston, seconds. Discussion? Please vote.
The vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda, a motion is in order. We've pulled it already.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ralston, discussion? Mr. Wil, Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd request that item 14.12 be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, we will be moving 14.12 to right after this vote, prior to the student, before 15. So we are voting on everything except 14.12, correct? All right. Please vote.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Thank you. We will now discuss 14.12. Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move that on item 14.2, under item four qualifications, we unstrike bullet three and strike bullet eight. Simply what that does is maintains the current requirement that we've had from the beginning that a student have a 2.5 GPA or higher in order to be considered.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Mr. Trenum, any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, one no. Jessie, one absent. Williams, motion passed.
Next is 15.01, appointment.
Mr. Chairman, now you need a motion to adopt the policy.
Oh, yeah, got it, got it, all right, sorry. My apologies. Now we, that was the motion to approve the amendment. I was jumping ahead of myself. Now we need to approve the entire policy. Do I have a motion to approve the policy? Mr. Trenum.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board approve the recently amended policy 124, student representatives to the school board.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? That was second by Mr. Deutsch. Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Okay, 15.01 now. Appointment and announcement of the student representatives. Tonight, the school board approved revisions to policy 124, student representatives to the school board. As we move into a third school year with our student representatives providing the very valuable voice of the student body on issues of importance to the school board, the role of the student representatives have evolved since 2017, when the first representatives were appointed. Based on the experience and exit interviews of former student representatives, the board has accepted staff recommendations to make the appointments more meaningful and rewarding for those students who've applied for the positions, and to improve the process by which our student representatives reach out to fellow students for their important input on board matters. This year, we will have two student representatives who will alternate every month, sitting on the board and meeting with a new student senate, which will be comprised of students from every Prince William County high school. Before we announce this year's student representatives, the board wants to acknowledge and thank every student who took the time to apply for the position and participate in the arduous process leading up to this evening's announcement. Those students are, and I will read all the students who went through our process, their names, all fabulous students with great applications. Gideon Adu Umafi, Jocelyn of Garfield High School, Jocelyn Andrade, Woodbridge Senior High School, Spogmy Anwer, Colgan High School, Hima Yatola Azizi, Garfield High School, Jessica Benitez, Woodbridge High School, Eliana Black, Hilton High School, Nia Brooks, Brentsville District High School, Sophia Calderon, Battlefield, Asata Sisi, Freedom High School, Rebecca Custer, Battlefield High School, Nigus Dawit, Potomac High School, Teresa De Jesus Dominguez Kioza, Hilton High School, Sadara Funches, Potomac High School, Tahira Hamidi, Freedom High School, Tume Hun, Osborne Park High School, Grace James, Brentsville District High School, Ben Kim, Stonewall Jackson High School, Ethan Key, Colgan High School, Benjamin Radman, Forest Park High School, Dua Sati, Patriot High School, Eric Sledge, Stonewall Jackson High School, Grace Stillman, Osborne Park High School, Kyle Thaller, Patriot High School, Lilly Zackman, Forest Park High School. Can we give them a round of applause? We also want to congratulate those students who will serve this year on the student senate as very important liaisons between the student representatives and the student body of their schools. Those students are, and I will announce the students who are now going to be part of the student senate, and I will do that right now. Teresa De Jesus Dominguez Kioza, Hilton High School, Jessica Benitez, Woodbridge High School, Tume Hun, Osborne Pike, Osborne Park High School, Asiata Sisi, Freedom, Rebecca Custer, Battlefield, Sadara Funches, Potomac, Benjamin Radman, Forest Park, Eric Sledge, Stonewall Jackson, Spogmy Anwer, Colgan, Hima Yatola Azizi, Garfield, Nia Brooks, Brentsville, Dua Sati, Patriot. We will also be adding a representative soon to be announced from the Independence Non-Traditional School. Round of applause for all those guys. Someone should give me applause for saying these names. Outstanding. I'm very excited. Next, we will have, I'm sorry. I need a motion for appointment of this year's student representatives.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Satterwhite.
I move that the Prince William County School Board appoint Ben Kim from Stonewall Jackson High School and Tahira Hamadi from Freedom High School as student representatives to the Prince William County School Board, and appoint Eliana Black from Hilton High School as the alternate student representative to the school board for the 2019-2020 school year.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lily Jessie.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Fantastic. Let's say their names again. Our new student representatives to the school board are now officially Ben Kim of Stonewall Jackson High School, Tahira Hamidi, Freedom High School. Our alternate is Eliana Black, Hilton High School. Thank you, and another round of applause for them. Oh, are they here? I'm sorry, are they in the audience? Do we have Mr. Ben Kim? Excellent, excellent. Thank you. Tahira Hamidi? Okay. And Eliana Black? Yes. Okay, fantastic. So do we have any of the student senate representatives that we called out earlier in the audience? Would they like to stand? Okay, round of applause for them. Thank you. Thank you all for your patience on that. As we continue to do this, you know, the process for this has changed, and I am excited about the new student senate, I think, as the entire board is just voiced with their support of this new policy. And I look forward to hearing what our student senators will have to say. So thank you all very much. We will now move on to 1601 citizen comments. I will go ahead and get the names here of the folks that signed up. So it looks like we have 11 folks. We'll have them all speak, so I'll just, you know, call up your na, I'll call your names up, and you can grab a seat up front or stay where you'd like. Sue Danielson, Robert Murray, Olivia de La Cueva, Jennifer Jilly, Melissa Roth, Kristy Wyatt, Jalen Wyatt, Kate Olson Flynn, Shannon Conlin, Richard Jessie, Swannell Wiggins, Natasha Gillespie. And we do this the same way. You'll have three minutes to speak. The clerk will keep the time. The lights on the monitor will indicate your progress. The yellow light will signify you should sum up your position. Red indicates your time is up and you should stop. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. Please give your name and address for the record when you approach the podium. Our first speaker is Sue Danielson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Tired.
I'm Sue Danielson, the very proud principal of Rosa Parks Elementary, and I have some fantastic students behind me who have waited anxiously to come and talk to you tonight. So, Robert?
Hi, my name is Robert Murray. I'm in fourth grade at Rosa Parks Elementary School, and my teacher is Ms. Gaskill. I've brought a few other golden eagles with me. Emily Smith? Tyler Smith? Monoff? Brayden Taylor? Grace Murray? Evelyn? And Andrea? Our school theme this year is changing world with kindness, one heart at a time. November 13th is World Kindness Day. My friend Olivia is going to talk more about how it all started.
Hello. Hi, my name is Olivia de La Cueva. I attend Rosa Parks Elementary. I'm in fifth grade. My teacher is Ms. Brennan. These kindness signs all started with a woman named Ginny Bonnell. She wants everyone to live by the golden rule, be kind. She's giving these signs out for free and says if a sign just touches one heart, its purpose has been served. Ms. Bonnell got her inspiration from her concern about all the negativity in the world. She is well-known for her kindness signs. These signs hang in schools, businesses, and homes to remind us to be kind. We hope all these signs will spread the message.
That's our message.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Let's give another round of applause for these wonderful students from Rosa Parks Elementary School. Thank you guys so much. Jennifer Gilli? Melissa Roth?
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. I'm here because I'm a parent at Woodbridge High School, and I have the unfortunate news of the head coach's resignation, and it's just very alarming to me. He has a wonderful reputation in the community, and he has the full support of the parents and children, and I just, there seems to be a culture shift and something wrong, and I wanted to raise it up here. I don't really know exactly what the hiring practices are. I know there's been a change in leadership, but my one question is, is the leadership allowed to be hired when they haven't? What's the practices? That's kind of really my question. Are they allowed to be hired when they haven't applied, when they're not an interested party? You know, was everybody vetted correctly? There just seems to be a very swift change for someone with a very good record, who has put 20 high school students, has helped 20 high school students get full scholarships in the last two years, and it's really unfortunate that this is here. So, I wanted to bring it to your attention, get some feedback on what the practices are, and really just, the culture change here is alarming. Something obviously has changed, and that's really all I wish to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristy Wyatt?
Good afternoon, board members, and congratulations to those of you who won office last evening. You won office because you've been doing your jobs. You've been doing your jobs very well. You have been held accountable, and you have been responsible by the citizens of this great county. I'm before you today because the associate superintendent for high school, Mr. Margrew, have not been doing his job. For the past four years, I have several complaints that have gone up through his office. I have requested on numerous occasions to speak with the deputy superintendent and the superintendent. However, their gatekeepers keeps pushing me down to Mr. Margrew, who is the problem, okay? If there's allegations of child abuse, even though it's an allegation, it still gets investigated. Don't do the investigation by the perpetrator. There needs to be someone outside to do the investigation, okay? My son is going to speak on some child abuse issues that went on for three years, and still to this day, the problem has not been resolved. The previous chairperson for the board was going to handle that problem for me, but he resigned, okay? Then, I had medical issues and couldn't continue to fight the issue, but I'm fighting it now. One of the gross issues that also occurred in the past several weeks was transcript issues. I have a senior in high school. I met with the principal of my son's school and the deputy counselor about why do I have four or five different transcripts from August to October, and no grades have been put in? The grades keep changing, the format of the transcripts keep changing, and I got to submit these things, his transcript and other documents, to the senators and congressmen for military service academy nominations, and I can't meet those deadlines. Which transcript am I supposed to use? Which is the right transcript? I found out through my own investigations that there was a bug in the IT system, and none of the parents were notified. If your son had at least one F on a transcript, then they were affected. So, we should have been notified as parents. We're giving fraudulent transcripts to schools, universities, the military service academies, and that is not right. There should have been parent notification as well as a temporary solution to a corrected transcript. Thank you very much. This is one of many issues that I will be bringing before this board concerning Mr. Margrew. There's no accountability for him, and he needs to be accountable.
Jalen Wyatt?
Good evening. My name is Jalen Wyatt. I'm a senior of Woodbridge Senior High School, and I have my pilot's license, and future Air Force, F-22 Raptor pilot. I come here before you guys today for one of many horrific experiences that happened while I was at Potomac Senior High School. One of the many things that happened under Mr. Margrew's watch. Three years later, and he has still not made right the wrong that has been done to me. My introduction to high school included a physical and abusive Cambridge English teacher named Ms. Thompson, who consistently bullied and harassed me and intimidated several of her other ninth-grade students. I had a medical issue where my medication made me drowsy, and my severe allergies at the time would give me sinus headaches, and she would make them worse by hitting me in the back of the head after she knew that I had a doctor's note describing why I would be drowsy in class. Also, she would use sharp pins and metal rulers to throw at me in my face or in the back of my head to wake me up, and that would also make the trauma to my head worse. And she was consistently allowed to retaliate against me after my mom had emailed Mr. Margrew. Not only that, but she told one of my classmates in the beginning of the year that she was going to fail me in the first quarter, and I had documented evidence and text messages of that incident from those students that heard her say that, and Mr. Margrew said he didn't care. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Kate Olson Flynn?
Good evening, Chairman Latif, school board, and Dr. Waltz. I'm Dr. Kate Olson Flynn, and my address is on file. I want to congratulate all the board members who re-elected last night. I look forward to working with you to make this school division the best it can be, and I would like to recognize and thank the board members who will be completing their term in office this year. Thank you for your service, your hard work and dedication in making our schools better, for our communities, and our county. Tonight, you will review the administration's strategic plan and see the statistics about how Prince William County schools are doing overall compared to national and state data. While looking at data in this way is important in understanding how our schools are doing in general, I want to emphasize how critical it is to remember that behind those scores are students, teachers, and schools, with different strengths and challenges that these data do not capture. Generalized data points can be deceiving and can foster complacency when they take a broad view of findings such as our graduation rate is higher than the state average. For example, the data indicates that our teacher turnover rate is low, around 8%, and that's fantastic. However, that aggregate number is just an average score of the entire county and does not reflect the individual differences that schools have. In this case, Title I schools, research indicates that Title I schools demonstrate, show that schools with high numbers of disadvantaged kids and kids of color and English learners generally have more turnover rates, and we wouldn't know if that's the case in Prince William County if we just look at the aggregate data of 8%. Therefore, I want you to keep in, to consider while listening to these data, that I want you to be happy for your success, that these data, this aggregate data is wonderful, but to also recognize that we need school-level data to really see where we can help our students and teachers in their unique problems and concerns that they have, so that we can make this school division achievement better, because the school data is where we can really help our students and teachers succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Conlin?
Good evening. My name is Shannon Conlin, and I've had the great pleasure of serving the state of Virginia for the past 20 years as a public school teacher. I love my career and the great state that we live in here. However, tonight, I'm speaking to you as a parent of students in Prince William County schools. Also, I serve as the role of second vice president of the PTO and a member on my school's principal advisory council. I'm here to share my concerns over a very recent decision that was made at my children's school, Signal Hill Elementary School. My twin boys are currently in kindergarten at that school in separate classrooms. We're new to Prince William County. Monday morning, I had the pleasure of meeting with both of the amazing teachers who have instructed and built strong relationships with both of my boys. My children are thriving under their help. I had no indication that morning of what was to come. Late Monday afternoon, November 4th, I received a personal phone call from the school's principal, Mrs. Webb. She was calling to inform me that my son Hayden's class was going to be dissolved amongst the remaining four kindergarten classes. Sorry. She said that my son's teacher would be replacing a teacher in third grade who was going to be de-staffed. Shocked and almost speechless, I asked some general questions relating to the wives. Mrs. Webb kept going back to the budget and how the budget doesn't support the personnel she currently has in place. In the past two days, I have surveyed administrators and veteran teachers, and not one of them had ever heard of an experience where a teacher was de-staffed nine weeks into the school year. Nine full weeks, one whole quarter, and we're just now being informed of this. I'm deeply saddened and angry at the impact of Mrs. Webb's, and I'm quoting her, she said this to me, her big mistake in making this decision due to the budget. It's having a profound ripple effect on the school. Come to find out, not just one teacher right now is being de-staffed, but in fact, 2.5 teachers are being de-staffed from that school. Here's what it's looking like. Third grade teacher de-staffed, kindergarten class dissolved, and the teacher in kindergarten's moving to third grade, first grade teacher being de-staffed, and the class is being dissolved. A .5 position is being de-staffed, and a possible 1-2 combination class will be made. This is impacting all classes in kindergarten. First grade, possibly second grade, and one third grade class, all because of Mrs. Webb's mistake in overstaffing the school. I'm begging that Prince William County School eats her mistake and finds a way to fund the positions that are currently in place. Why should students have to pay for her mistake? Why should dedicated staff have their world turned upside down because of her mistake? You are charged with ensuring the best practice is taking place in your schools. This is not best practice, and this impact could impact students and staff for a very long time. I had to sit my five-year-old down last night and try to explain so that he could understand, and when I tried to promote it in a positive light by saying, "Isn't this great that you'll have a new teacher?" His reply was, "No, it isn't great to me. I love my teacher and my classmates, just as it is, Mama." He was scared to go to bed last night, nervous heading out to school today, and when he went to practice in his new classroom, he was actually sent to the wrong classroom.
Thank you, Ms. Conlin.
Thank you.
Sorry. Mr. Richard Jessie?
Good evening. My name is Richard Jessie. My address is on file. First, I'll thank, congratulations to all the board members that were re-elected, and condolences to those who were not. I want to talk a little bit, I think I mentioned this at the last citizen time or the one before that. The situation at Woodbridge High School, I think, needs to be thoroughly investigated. I do think there's retaliation occurring at that with the coach. The coach has now resigned. He has one of the best scholarship records and the best, working with the students in the county, and has been on staff, I believe, for several years, and all of a sudden, I think what started was when the issue came up that they needed a new field, and ever since that issue has come up, it seems that, in my opinion, retaliation has occurred. It is, as a person, as a few minutes ago said, you cannot have the person accused or associated with the issue investigating the issue. I have said before that the ansibus person here is a great thing, but they have no investigative powers. The investigators in this organization seems to lack authority to investigate, or they do not investigate, and the- do not investigate and the allegations are that they are not interviewing all the witnesses for the accused in some cases and not doing a thorough job. The board, I know, and I'm not supposed to get involved in Personnel Matters, however, the board has oversight of Personnel Matters and you ought to look at the investigations that are being done and make sure they are done appropriately. It is a sad state when a coach of this caliber, a person that is now going down to Florida for the Under Armour game as a coach, has sent, I think is the only coach in history that has two Under Armour students participating in the game and we are now letting this person resign. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jesse. Ms. Wiggins.
Waltz, Dr. Latif, board members, thank you for your time. I am Swanell Wiggins, 4468 Starling Court, Woodbridge, Virginia. I have two sons, well, actually three sons, who attend Woodbridge Senior High School. And yes, three sons. Two are in the AP Scholars Program and one is in the American Sign Language Program and they are loving it. It is very challenging, but they are loving it. Initially, going into Woodbridge Senior High School, we were very, very excited. The climate and the culture there was upbeat and there was a lot of happiness and joy. There were much, much things to celebrate, but now there, the culture has changed and there seems to be a lull over, over the school. When children, when our, your boys' friends come to us and they say, "Ms. Wiggins, I don't know what's going on. There's someone there who we just feel like they just don't care about us and he speaks down to us and he said to us that if you don't like what I have to say, you can leave." We don't feel as though this person should be in a, in a position of leadership to deal with children and speak with them that way and this is the Director of Student Activities. We just want, we just want our school back. We want our school back. We want that, the happiness back in the school. We want the joy back in the school. We want the joy back in the students. We have gone to the building principal, several parents have spoken with her about several issues and she listens, but we feel as though her hands have been tied and that she's not able to do exactly what she needs to do in the building. I don't know where the tying of the hands is coming from, but that is the perception. And if that is the perception that many of us have, then that is also our reality and I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. Ms. Gillespie.
My name is Natasha Gillespie. My address is on file. I am speaking, I am from, I have a son at Woodbridge High School. I'm speaking from a parent who also, child come from the athletic. My son is a four-star football player. He has 20 offers from Penn State to University of Kentucky. He will, he, it's a possibility that he'll be representing Woodbridge High School in the ESPN Fortune 50 and he is the top 300, in the top 300 ESPN junior. I'm speaking on behalf of my son. My son has concerns. I was one of the parents who speak on behalf of the athletic director, the new athletic director. There has been a lot of changes there. I had a meeting with the principal at one time and when I was there, the AD and I had a conversation, he didn't like the conversation that we had. At the end of the conversation, he violated FERPA because he began to speak about my son's grades, began to speak about my son's transcript and then spoke failure into my son's life. At that time, I stopped him. I have had two meetings so far with Principal Abney in reference to that. My son today, when we was coming here, I mean, when I was picking him up and dropping him off home, he'd say, "Ma, can you please..." He's sending out my son's transcript to the colleges which Mr. Wortham normally deal with because he has over 30 years of relationship with the schools. So he, the AD has been sending out his transcript. I have written a letter to Principal Abney requesting that he don't do it because it seemed like he's trying to set my son up. He just sending his transcripts everywhere. His transcript is not to go everywhere to all the colleges that has been sending it out to, who has been reaching out for him. I had asked, I also asked for the list of the schools that his transcripts has been sent out. I just spoke to Principal Abney a few seconds ago to get those to me. I sent her an email earlier today. My son did not feel comfortable. He felt like he's trying to sabotage, sabotage his, his chances of going to elite schools and being able to play D1 football and everything. The relationship since the AD been there, my son has been very overwhelmed and withdrawn because he just don't know. And now that the coach is resigning, it has put a lot of pressure on my son of just not being himself and everything. And we also talked to Principal Abney about how the new AD and the issues that he's bringing, unnecessary issues towards the children. And the children are fighters. They had, they didn't do so well in the beginning, but look how they coming together and they fighting and the possibility may be in the playoff if they win this Friday. So it's not just about football, it's also about academics. So I just want you all just to hear me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're moving to 16.01, no, sorry. 17.01 Strategic Plan Report. Wait, this is, that's awful. 17, yeah. Strategic Plan Report. Mr. Iman.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening Chairman Latif, Vice Chairman Wilk, members of the board and Dr. Waltz. Tonight, we are very pleased to share with you the annual report on the school board approved strategic plan based on data from the 2018-2019 school year. This report will also show trends over time. Our discussion will continue to focus on areas of success and opportunities for growth and continuous improvement. But this year, you're going to notice something new in the presentation. We've added a visual key and you'll see that represented on this slide. The first is a green shooting star logo that indicates those measures, measures with a great deal of success. You will also note that areas in which we will look at more closely to see how we can improve are identified with a magnifying glass logo and that'll be throughout the report. And to walk us through this report, it's now my privilege and honor to turn the podium over to Dr. Jennifer Casada. Jennifer.
All right. Good evening Chairman Latif, Vice Chairman Wilk, School Board members and Dr. Waltz. It's exciting to be able to share with you this annual report. I'm going to jump right in and get going. So the first thing we're going to talk about is accreditation. As you remember, Virginia instituted a new accreditation system just a couple of years ago. This is the second year with our new system. Purpose of this system compared to the old system is to include a wider range of measures for school quality beyond just test scores. Plus, the new system gives credit to schools for demonstrating growth in student proficiency. The state includes performance indicators in overall proficiency in growth in English and math, proficiency in science, achievement gaps in English and math. Really, this is defined as student group performance in those areas. Chronic absenteeism as a measure of student engagement, graduation and dropout rates which are obviously only at the high school level. You'll see the levels on the right side of the slide. The green, yellow and red show you the three levels of performance. Level one is obviously the goal. Schools with all indicators at level one or two are accredited and level two is kind of a transitional area. It's where schools can be for a while, but they're not expected to be able to live there. The good news that I know you have heard, Prince William County has always had a measure, focused on all schools being accredited. I'm pleased to say that all schools in Prince William County schools met the accreditation standards for 2019-20, which means they're based on last year's data. Remember, the state no longer uses the label "fully accredited" so accredited is that top level. A school with any indicator at level three will be accredited with conditions. And to reiterate, all of the Prince William County schools are accredited, none are accredited with conditions. Just to note an additional thing, all schools had their English and math overall indicators at level one, just to point that out. All right, now we're going to dig into performance, particularly in reading and math, since these are the measures in the plan. Beyond meeting accreditation standards, the planning focuses on improving performance in reading and mathematics. So you heard Mr. Iman talk about the icons and on this slide, you're going to see both of them. So the slide shows trends for Prince William County and the state in reading and, on the left side, in math, on the right side. As has been the trend in both of these at the division level, Prince William County performance tends to mirror the state. You can see and the reason we have our magnifying glass for reading is performance has been pretty level as opposed to improving. However, if you look on the right side for mathematics, performance increased from 1718 to 1819, which is why that's demonstrating some success. Next, we're looking deeper into reading and then mathematics scores, not just overall, but by groups of students. And so this slide shows us the performance by student group for students in Prince William County as compared to, as compared to the state. You can, this allows us to examine gaps in achievement. This chart shows us reading performance by ethnic group. The reading performance of African-American, Hispanic and white students in Prince William County exceeds state average and has been relatively stable. We do point out there are some gaps that remain amongst our, between our students. This next slide, okay, this next slide shows performance of our disadvantaged students, English learners and students with disabilities in Prince William County and in Virginia. All three groups exceed state averages when compared to their peers. The reason why there's the green shooting star here in particular is the success worth noting is the increase, increase for students with disabilities, pass rates increased six percentage points. Remember I said overall, the percent remains stable, the performance of our students with disabilities did go up in reading. The next two slides show us the same thing, but for mathematics. Remember, we saw some success in mathematics. This slide looks at the performance of students by ethnic group as compared to the state. Again, performance of our African-American, white and Hispanic students in Prince William County exceeded state averages. In Prince William County and the state as a whole, there were increases in, in pass rates in the last year. Some gaps do remain, however, here they are getting smaller. African-American compared to white students, the gap is 12 points down from 17 points a year ago and for Hispanic students compared to white, 14 points down from 19 points the year before. This slide shows us the performance in mathematics of our disadvantaged students, English learners and students with disabilities. Again, all three groups are above state averages and increases, significant double-digit increases occurred for each. 11 points for our disadvantaged students, 12 points for English learners and 15 points for students with disabilities. All right, just because you haven't gotten enough, this slap focuses on the gaps for those targeted groups. I want to explain what you're seeing. The chart on the left is reading and the chart on the right is mathematics. Each group compares the group of interest, so our disadvantaged students are English learners and our students with disabilities, to their comparison group. So our non-disadvantaged students are native speakers of English and our students without disabilities. I know that's a mouthful. The yellow outlined box illustrates the actual gap between the two groups. While gaps remain, hence the magnifying glass icon, there is success here. The gaps for disadvantaged students compared to non-disadvantaged students decreased by five points in math and one in reading. Gaps for English learners compared to native English speakers decreased by six points in math and one point in reading. And for students with disabilities compared to non-disabled peers, decreased by five points in math and two points in reading. This means everybody, particularly in mathematics, was going up, but you were seeing bigger gains for some of our groups where there have been gaps. All right. In addition to looking at overall pass rates, the strategic plan has had a measure at looking at students performing at high levels. This shows trends by subject area, students earning pass advance scores. Pass advance rates increased in science, hence the icon. However, they remain stable in reading and math. There was a slight decrease in social studies. However, it's important to note that at high school, far fewer students took the high school history tests due to changes in graduation requirements. The students who did not take the test were those who had already earned the required credits and were not allowed to take the test. I'm sure they complained about that, the students. All right. Another measure of challenge in advanced performance is the percent of our students who leave us having earned at least one qualifying score on an AP, IB or Cambridge exam. This has been a strength for Prince William County and remains so. In 2018-19, 35% of our graduates had earned at least one of these qualifying scores, which tend, which remains above state and national averages. If Prince William County, you've heard me say this before, if Prince William County was a state, we'd be the highest performing state.
What is considered a qualifying score? Can you explain that?
Sure. So it depends on the, in AP, it's a three or higher and IB, that's like, oh, Mr. Mogru, four. And in Cambridge, it's like E. There's those scores that can earn students credit. Of course, different colleges have different standards, but those are set by the institution. So the college board sets a threshold, IB sets one, and that's how that works.
So what, what, how, explain that, if, what's our average? I mean, I don't know how to, when you say 35% of the student, just tell me what the 35% means.
So of our graduates, 35% of them have earned at least one of those.
So of all graduates, 35%.
Have earned at least one of those.
At least one of those.
Yes, sir. Yes.
Mr. Wilk.
For point of clarification, and maybe you can get it for us now, not now, but later, do we have a percentage of kids who actually try but then do not get it? Like, so kids who might go for the IB, Cambridge or AP program who do actually not earn the qualifying score?
I'm sure we can get that information.
Because that's not 65%. That'll be a different number.
No, no, correct.
Yeah, 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 no, that's right.
Correct. You'll see in a little while our participation in advanced programs and there's correlations there, but we can get that information.
Thank you.
All right. More high school measures. So the next two slides look at college readiness exams, ACT and SAT. The charts, the first slide is SAT and it's showing us performance last year comparing us to the state and the nation as indicated in the measure. The chart on the left is overall showing, it says ERW, that's English Reading and Writing and then math and then the total score. That's why the third set of bars is so high. And then on the right side, it's broken down by ethnicity. Just a few highlights and something to keep in mind, Prince William County Schools now pays for all students to take the PSAT in grades nine, 10 and 11. Grade nine was added this year in this current budget. This allows for earlier identification for students to be into those advanced classes we were just talking about. So you may see benefits of that moving down. We just instituted ninth grade this year. More students in Prince William County took the SAT in 1819 compared to the year before and that's not always the trend nationwide. Some places, those numbers are going down, but they were going up here.
Mr. Wilk.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Dr. Casada, a question, and when you say the ninth, 10th or 11th grade, could a student technically take it each year, take a PSAT if they wanted?
Yes, the students can take, and it's a different, the ninth grade test is a different, a different test and, but they're scaled on the same scale. The college board made changes a couple of years ago to align everything for the PSAT up through the SAT so that it's all on that scale. The 10th and 11th test, 10th and 11th grade test is the same thing. The 10th grade is used to identify, a lot of identification of students. The 11th grade test is also used for the National Merit Recognition Program and other scholarship offers and that's how a lot of students get information from colleges through getting their scores out that way.
Are they mandated to take the PSAT or are you giving them an option in ninth and 10th? Is it an option or are they all going to do it?
It's an option.
Why? Why only an option? Or why not mandated?
Sorry.
Because some parents can ask that their student not take it because of the amount of testing that we take. Generally, the vast majority of the students take it.
So the vast majority take it?
Vast.
So it's, okay, yeah.
Yes, and so it's a vast majority, but parents can opt out.
Something like, you have 400 freshmen, 350 are taking it.
We can get the counts for the PSAT, but the participation rates are extremely high.
Can I just, real quick, follow-up question to that with the parents? So a kid cannot say, "I don't want to take it." It has to come from a parent to get them opted out of it? Or can a kid literally come and be like, "I don't want to take this"?
So they would work through their counseling office to withdraw from that and most of the time, we're force communicating with parents.
Thank you.
Thanks. Go ahead.
Just a couple of other things related to the SAT. Our African-American students outperform peers in Virginia and nationwide in both reading, the reading and math areas as well as the total score and our Hispanic students outperform peers nationwide in both areas as well as the total score. Six of our high schools exceeded the state average and the national average. Battlefield, Brunsville, Colgan, Forest Park, Osborne Park and Patriot. That's just some of the information.
How many of our high schools did not exceed the state average?
Six.
Six. And the, what do you attribute that to?
Virginia's state average, this, I can only speak to it from a score perspective. Virginia's state average is among one of the highest in the country and I don't, I can't speak to the specifics. It would, that's just the pattern. We have gotten closer as a school division to the state average than we ever have before this year. this year. The difference between Prince William County and Virginia was smaller than ever. So we're, our performance is increasing, but there's different levels at different schools.
So, you know, when I, when I talk to the finance people, sometimes I always ask them to benchmark how we compare in Northern Virginia on monies, on class size, on teacher pay. Have you benchmarked our SAT scores compared to Fairfax Loud and Alexandria Arlington?
So it's been done before. I don't have it with this year. The trick with SAT scores and ACT scores is the information that goes to the college board for students is self-reported. And so then what school division, sometimes some will then use that information. We're showing you the college board information. Sometimes divisions will look at their own information, so there's a little bit of apples to oranges, but we can certainly do some benchmarking for you.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be great, because, I mean, I would just like to know how we compare to our peers here in Northern Virginia, and maybe pick some of the other districts, like, you know, Henrico, Albemarle, similar-sized districts.
Sure. Okay.
Just very quickly, too, and as we take these notes and we can provide the information, just to be clear, we're reporting tonight on the data that's in the strategic plan and what we were asked to measure the data against. In this case, there was no comparison as part of the strategic plan to benchmark with other school divisions. So going forward, we can do a whole lot of things, but the data tonight is reporting on what is in the adopted approved strategic plan, which is measures against the state and the nation, just to be clear.
Thank you.
All right, so moving to the next slide, similar thing for ACT. For ACT, this shows you performance for the past three years. And our composite score for the ACT, which of course is a completely different scale than the SAT, did increase, and again, it's closer to Virginia averages than ever before. I will note that fewer students took the ACT in Prince William County in 1819 than in the previous year, which is the same trend as in the state as a whole, slight decreases in participation. Okay, moving away from test performance. As we mentioned earlier, the state's expanded accreditation indicators. One we will visit later in the presentation is chronic absenteeism. In addition, the strategic plan has always had a focus on average daily attendance. The target is 95%, which means that on average, on a given day, 95% of our students are in school.
Are we moving off of SAT stuff? Are we going on to the next thing, right?
Yes.
Can we go back to the SAT slide for a sec, or ACT side?
ACT, yep.
The, do we have any data on what number, percentage of our students are, besides the PSAT, being prepped for it, or prep courses for it? Or are we in our high schools doing any prep classes for it, or any prep work? Do we have any programs, pilots? Yes, no?
Would you please come to the dais, or come to the podium?
And I'm happy, Dr. Walz, should I address these questions to you, or should I continue to address them to Ms. Casada?
Please.
Well, okay. Well, she's doing the, okay. So if you feel like Dr. Walz can answer, feel free to.
So this, this one, in terms of what's happening in terms of prep programs, I can't speak to. I can speak to the numbers of students who, we can get you the information about participation and performance, but as for programs, definitely there are folks who could get that, but it's not me.
So Mr. Mulgrew, will you please, we can get more information in specifics, but I know we have a number of programs at schools that promote SAT prep and ACT.
The three major testing groups, International, Baccalaureate, Cambridge, and now the, the Advanced Placement?
Yes.
Yeah, all three of them provide what's called either a capstone course, and what we do is we lead up to those particular courses. Thinking Skills in the Cambridge program, we've, just Dr. Walz has approved, we're allowed to use that across the whole division, not just in Cambridge schools. So we've already done that process. We began with the Khan Academy. It's a free service, and it's an SAT prep provided by the college board.
When did we start that?
We started that this year.
Year.
And it's impressive as far as what it can, it's the video component, and it can work with test assessments that are done. We did a presentation this year in front of the high school levels, and the Khan Academy increases, and it's free, which is one of the better things for some students, so that there's equity in that particular case. Those are the big ones that we use as far as.
Some of the high schools have some type of prep courses, right? I've seen some flyers come home and SAT prep. Are those done just private, like, you know, the students can sign up and take them on the weekends or something?
Yeah, that can be the private part of it.
Do you have any idea how many of our high schools are offering those opportunities for our students, and if that's across the division, or that's a whole site-based thing?
It would not be site-based. I'm pretty sure that most of them will, but I can get that information for you.
Mr. Wilk?
I'm sorry.
And Mr. Mulgrew, question, when Dr. Casada was saying, was it six schools did not meet the required, so for, and I'm not going to ask those being named right now, and those can be given to me later, those are fine later, but when, if there are repeated ones, which I'm assuming is possible ones that might do it year over year, are we doing any type of extra emphasis or support at those buildings for helping bring one of those up with those scores, with those kids and stuff like that?
Yes, when you get to the SAT, sometimes there's, it's about exposure. So we have basically opened up the Advanced Placement, which shows them the types of questions that are used on the SAT and the ACT as well. This year, what we've done is we've tried to increase the number of students taking these types of courses, so that the exposure issue is what develops with the student. Some students of some socioeconomic backgrounds, like when I grew up, we didn't have the resources of families in other places. So the exposure comes through with the Advanced Placement courses. They see the types of questions, they see the types of assessments that are necessary to have that go forward. We have increased significantly the exposure over the years, and we continue to do that. I appreciate Dr. Walz allowing us to offer Cambridge Division Y, if it's, a student doesn't have to be necessarily at Brunsfield, and I believe we approved a pilot this year, to begin the process of a course called Thinking Skills, which has significant benefits. I'd also like to thank.
Is that Thinking Skills mandated, or it's optional?
It would be optional. It's an AS level. It would be usually taken in your 11th, it can be taken in your 10th grade year. And we believe it has benefits to it. The students report that to us. I'd also like to thank Dr. Casada and Paul Parker for assisting us. We went to them last year, and we said, "Do our students perform better on the ACT or the SAT? If a parent only has $75, which to pay for one of those two assessments, do we typically do better? Do our Hispanic students do better? Do students of socioeconomics? Is there a language issue?" And he was very beneficial in looking at us and trying to give us that. He did a cost analysis or a cross-analysis of whether the ACT or the SAT is a more fair test, as far as it, as far as doing those. And I appreciate that work.
Ms. Jesse.
You know, I always come with several questions. Please excuse my voice. Just on this SAT situation, you know, one of the things that, first of all, I want to thank Ms. Dr. Jennifer and also Mr. Iman for the flying star and the looking at opportunities due, because, you know, I've been asking that. I think the third thing I would like to see is something that says, "What is our plan for growth?" For me, it's all about, you show the numbers, what's the plan for growth? And maybe this is not a part of the strategic plan, but we need to have a plan for growth, because we just continue to show these numbers every year. And looking at the SAT, the other thing is that I, I don't call it presenting data in a way that sounds more positive than it is, because this is a good school system, and I want to say this in advance. But on Slide 11, you say, "Scores for black students exceed state and national average." Yet, the scores for, the aggregate score for black students is 900, compared to your white students at 1100 and Asian students at 1197. And I've kind of looked at different colleges in the area, such as Christopher Newport, George Mason, JMU, Old Dominion, University of Richmond, University of Virginia, and African-American black students with a 967 would not be able to be admitted to any of those schools because they have higher SAT requirements. So I just want us to deal with the reality of where we are and what is our plan to improve. Now, some of you know that my daughter has worked with an SAT company and does some SAT tutoring, so I'm a little bit more familiar with it. And the thing that's concerning to me is this. If you are not a middle-class parent with the resources to pay for SAT tutoring, which is very expensive, what happens to those kids? Who helps those kids? Is there some way to have some type of, for seniors, for example, something, a course or something just on prep for SAT during the day that is, I guess, more cost-effective for them, or where there's no cost? Are we looking at that? I've heard of different things being done, but for the past, ever since I've been here, the score has been pretty much flat. The trend data has been flat, and I don't see us really moving up substantially. And I think we have to have better scores, because in order to get into most of these universities, you've got to have a score of at least 1100. And also, when we look at the college board benchmarks, what concerns me is that we often talk about the 90% graduation rate. We often talk about our SAT scores, but the college board says that in order for kids to be successful in college, I think it's something like 1050 for a C the first year. And Prince William, we're doing a little bit better, because Dr. Casada had shared those scores. So 55, 54% of students in the state of Virginia are, will be ready, meet that benchmark, but only 20, 22% of African-Americans, and I think in Prince William, maybe with 32%, something like that. That's just something, I, what, what I'm asking for during my tenure on this board, you know, and I've been asking for, I just need to have a plan of action. I'd like to see us plan to do more world-class type of competition or comparison. And of course, this report, Dr. Iman, I gave you a title, but I was pleased that you sat with me and went over this, but at the same time, I'm asking the same question. What is our current reality, and what are our plans to improve?
I'm going to rephrase Ms. Jesse's question like this, and maybe it summarizes what she asked. And Dr. Walz, feel free to answer this. Three or four years ago, what was the plan to get the SAT scores up? Did we achieve that? Khan Academy's been available for a long time. We're making it available now, and I think that's probably a good thing, and that does address, as you pointed out, the equity issue, because it's free. But it's been free a long time. So what, and I'm not sure, maybe students weren't encouraged to use it or encouraged to use it before, but now we're making a policy to do it. But three years ago, what was the plan, and did that plan work? If we're flat, it probably seems like it didn't, but I don't know the answer to that. Dr. Walz?
So I guess I would like to have you explain a little bit about the college academy, or the Khan Academy in relationship to College Board and the recent changes in that, because it hasn't been the same thing available for three years. This is something a little bit different. So if you could also explain that. And then, again, the, one of the benchmarks in the strategic plan was to increase access and encourage more and more students to take this. So again, we can easily raise the scores, but we, that's juxtaposed against the strategic framework, board-approved goal of increasing the access. So if you have students coming here, say, for example, in the ninth grade, and they have to take the SAT, and they don't speak a word of English, and there are schools that have very high percentages of that, that would be one example of not, certainly not exclusive, but of many where that's a very big challenge. But let's start with the Khan Academy and College Board.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. The Khan Academy expanded its resources. Previously, it was videos primarily what students would look at. If I had trouble with a derivative one night, I could go at home and I could look up the video, and it could supplement my, my instruction. Now it comes with resources attached to it that would be able to move the student from point A to point B. So it has greatly expanded in its, its ability to address some of the issues for, and provide basically SAT prep. The numbers coming out of the College Board, of course, it's a product from the College Board, they're going to brag about it, but the numbers coming out are impressive. I mean, to further Dr. Walz's point, sometimes you.
So those numbers are coming out from other divisions who've used it in past years, or what do you mean?
Coming from the College Board in New Jersey. They provide that information to us, that the success that they've had from, yeah, or other divisions that they've shown.
Do, and maybe to your point, Dr. Walz, do a larger percentage of our students take these tests than other divisions our size?
We do, and I believe we have that data.
Our participation, as I mentioned, for SAT continues to increase, and we're seeing that that's not necessarily the pattern state and nationwide. In terms of actual jurisdictions, that's something we could look at in the benchmarking you asked for.
But, but when you say that we have a large number of doing it, I assume we, we are higher than maybe the average?
So.
Nationwide or statewide? Like, we have a higher participation rate?
I'd have to get the participation numbers in terms of percentages. I don't have those off the top of my head, and so I don't want to claim something and not have it be true. But we can get that with the benchmarking for state, nation, and like jurisdictions.
Excellent, thank you. And so.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, we have 35 slides on the strategic plan presentation, and we're only on number 14. Can we go ahead and finish the presentation, and everybody write down their questions for later?
Sure.
Okay, so we finished with ACT for now, attendance. So I talked a little bit about this. This is average daily attendance, which really is showing us that our target is that 95%, 95%, meaning on a given day, 95% of our students will be in school. And this is a target we continue to meet. There's been some talk about graduation rate. This is another measure of program success. You can see, this is the On Time Graduate that was adopted by governors all over the country, beginning in like 2008, to show the percent of students who graduate within four years of beginning high school. This percentage has increased every year since the measure was put in place for Prince William County. This slide shows you, this does have some benchmarking and shows you graduation rates compared to the state and surrounding jurisdictions. As you already know, the graduation rates in Prince William County exceed state averages. These differences are meaningful from a statistical perspective due to the large number of students we have here in Prince William County and in the state. Also, you can see that the graduation rate exceeded Fairfax County for the third year running. This also is showing us some return on investment information. For the first time, we've added some information about cost per pupil at the end, since we have a lower cost per pupil than many surrounding jurisdictions, but we have higher graduation rates. Moving on, the current strategic plan has a focus on providing students with opportunities to excel. Dual enrollment is one of these ways that we've been seeing growth in the last few years. 20% of our graduates in 2019 received dual enrollment credit, up from 11% in 17, and 16% in 18. In addition, the chart on the right, another way to look at it is to see the percent of graduates who earn either dual enrollment credit or receive one of those qualifying scores that would earn credit. Again, that combining that API, IB in Cambridge and dual enrollment, 43% of the students achieved this in 2019. You can see that's a climb. College readiness is something that is about to be part of this state accreditation system in two years. But in the meantime, the way that we've been looking at it, we've benchmarked with the Virginia Community College System to see how they define college readiness. It includes things like, some of the stuff was mentioned about the college board standards and benchmarks, but also includes other things. And in 1617, they were redefined to incorporate the changes that had been made to the SAT and PSAT. The percentage of students meeting those benchmarks increased last year after having remained stable for the two previous years. So that percentage went up to 75%. The next slide shows the percent of graduates who received advanced diplomas for the past three years. Overall, 50% of graduates in Prince William County received advanced diplomas in 1819, which is down slightly from the year before. You can see on the slide, on the chart on the right, there's a good amount of variation in the proportions of our different student groups receiving advanced diplomas. The next two slides show us participation of traditionally underrepresented students in our gifted and advanced programs. The first slide shows elementary and middle school gifted participation. Overall, 18% of students in elementary school participating gifted, and 20% in middle school. And then you can see the variation for our student groups. Participation, most specifically in middle school gifted programs for minority students, has increased. Gaps, clearly, though, still do remain. This next slide brings back those yellow boxes I showed you before. This has gifted, this is at the high school level. The chart on the left shows you gifted participation, and the chart on the right shows you advanced The chart on the left shows you gifted participation, and the chart on the right shows you advanced program participation. And those yellow boxes show you the gaps between traditionally underrepresented groups and those students not in those groups. You can see that gifted gaps remain level. However, for advanced program participation, the gaps remain, but they are getting smaller. The next two slides are going to be somewhat parallel in, in structure. The first one shows you the percent of students in each student group that's been identified for special education. Overall, 11% of students in Prince William County schools were identified in '18, '19. This very slightly by student group. National averages show that approximately 13% of students nationwide are identified for special education. So that's just a point of comparison. And then, this slide shows discipline referrals by student group. As you can see, 12% of our students received one or more discipline referrals in '18, continuing a downward trend. The proportion of students varied across groups with the highest rates for our special education African-American students. It is important to note that the percentages of African-American students, students with disabilities, English learners, and Hispanic students receiving referrals all decreased from '16, '17 to '17, '18, and again, from '17, '18 to '18, '19. Earlier in the presentation, I mentioned the state now includes chronic absenteeism as an indicator in the accreditation system because they're calling it a measure of student engagement. And clearly, if the students aren't there, they can't be accessing learning. So they define chronic absenteeism as students who miss 10% or more of the school days. For a school year, a school, full school year, that would be 18 absences. So overall, 10% of our students were chronically absent in '18, '19, which is down from 13% in '16, '17, and 11% in '17, '18. Variation exists across levels. High schools are working diligently to reduce these percentages, and we saw many high schools demonstrate significant drops in the students of, percent of students who were chronically absent last year. All right. The next three slides are going to go really fast. They're about wellness, and this is our students meeting, meeting and exceeding state averages for PE requirements. This first slide shows how students across Virginia that are assessed in four physical fitness areas, our performance has been pretty level over time with a slight decrease in the aerobic category. The next two slides show you broken-out comparisons to the state for, first for our boys, and then the next slide will be for our girls, showing you just two of them, abdominal and aerobic for male students in grades five, eight, and 10, to show you one, one per level. Students, our boys, had wellness scores higher than state averages at all three grade levels in 2018, '19. And spoiler alert, the same pattern for our girls, same grade level, same tests, the pattern is the same. So one of the measures that the strategic plan has always had is stakeholder satisfaction. And this year, things are a little bit different because during '18, '19, our students were required by VDOE to participate in Virginia climate surveys instead of our survey, our local surveys. As a result, comparing trend data is not possible. The chart on the left does show that the overall satisfaction level, overall satisfaction by level, I'm sorry, elementary students showed an 88% satisfaction as compared to 83% of secondary students. The charts on the right show you some measures related to student engagement. The blue bars represent Prince William County and the gray bars represent the state. Prince William County students had the same or higher levels of engagement in emotional, academic, and behavioral engagement at both the secondary, elementary and secondary levels compared to state, their state peers. The next slide shows us parent and teacher and staff satisfaction. The chart on the left shows parent satisfaction over time. Parents were able to do the Prince William County surveys as in the past, and parent satisfaction, overall satisfaction did increase slightly in '18, '19, up to 93%. Teachers and school staff also participated in some VDOE-required surveys last year. The chart on the right shows teacher satisfaction and other school staff satisfaction as compared to the state. You can see that both groups had slightly higher levels of satisfaction as the state as a whole. Just as a point of reference, the state surveys were logistically challenging, and we received feedback from our schools that they were very cumbersome for respondents. Those surveys are not happening this year. However, the alignment with our surveys and the state surveys was pretty strong. All right. We're in the home stretch, I promise. In order for students to be able to achieve, one, they have to be in school; two, they have to have highly qualified teachers. This graphic shows the percent of students taught in, by highly qualified teachers in every one of their classes was at 97% in '18, '19. It is important to note that it still remains challenging for us to fill some positions. Another thing we do with teachers and a measure in the plan is about national board-certified teachers. The number, looking at the number, the number has remained stable over the past three years. This shows all national board-certified teachers in Prince William County schools. A point of information that I received this year, 100% of renewal candidates, meaning people who are nationally board-certified, who renew, have been successful from Prince William County schools in the renewal of their certification. The national board did make this process more complex. They used to be able to do this within a year, and now it takes up to three years for someone to complete. But our teachers who are doing it and persevering are being very successful. The teacher turnover rate in Prince William County continues to decrease slightly, with the flip side meaning that teacher retention increases slightly. It was very stable last year, not quite a decrease. Those turnover percentages remain between 10, below 10%, which are lower than national averages. A point of information, the Office of Accountability is working with Human Resources and doing some benchmarking of best practices for calculating turnover and retention, so there can be consistency across school divisions and allow us to do better benchmarking with our peers statewide. The final data slide tonight shows data related to our organizational alignment goal, which is Goal Five. We have an objective that deals with the equitable use of funds. We're currently meeting the goals and objectives as stated in this area. For fiscal year 2020, there's a 2.8 replacement value. We continue to utilize budgeted funds for the ongoing reductions of class sizes, and funding ratios are being reviewed yearly in preparation for next year's budget. We, as you know, are moving on to another budget season very soon. And of course, our internal auditor continues to conduct audits on a regular basis. As you've heard tonight, our current results provide many reasons for celebration and many opportunities for reflection and growth. Also, we are currently working on the development of a new strategic plan for the next five years, which will come to the Board in the spring. We're soliciting stakeholder involvement currently, and will be developing a public comment site, as we have done in the past, to give the public opportunities in many iterations to provide input and feedback as this new direction is shaped. Before I end the presentation, I must give credit to Marissa Escara, our data analyst in my office, who put together the data and visualizations used in tonight's presentation. I think she did a fantastic job. Thank you all very much for your time.
Questions? Mr. Trenum.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Ms. Casada. I have actually three quick questions, but I'll give them all to you at once. And the reason why I ask is a lot of times, over the, over the years, saying this briefing, we throw around terms that a lot, that, that think we understand to a certain degree the, what they mean, but a lot of other people don't, or some confusion. So if you could define these three terms or phrases for me. On, for, for, going 1.1, 1.9, we talk about college readiness. What is college readiness? On 4.1, we, 4.1 dot 1, we talk about highly qualified teachers. Please define what makes a highly qualified teacher. And then for your last data slide, you talked about equitable use of funds. What is equitable use of funds?
All right. I can answer one and two, and I'm going to turn to Mr. Wallingford for number three.
Perfect.
1.1, 1.9, the college readiness. We worked with the Virginia Community College System to find out, they have a series of ways they define whether a student is college-ready. It could be they've met a certain score on the SAT or the PSAT, or an AP or IB exam, or a certain threshold on one of their tests. Sometimes they use these measures to keep students from having to take placement tests. So they have a set of criteria that we apply to all of our students, and we have a, we have a report where we run and we look at all of our 12th graders to see how they match up on all of those things. The state is building a new college readiness indicator that's going to do a lot of that for us and include some other things, including work-based learning experiences and some other things that are happening in our schools, more related to CTE. So I look forward to that measure because I think that'll be even clearer for people to understand. Number two, the highly qualified teacher piece is a little tricky. What it really is, that percentage is really, if you look at all of the students in all of their classes, and all of the teachers, or whether those teachers are certified and endorsed specifically for what they're teaching in every single section. So you, in high school, if you have a teacher certified in biology and is teaching one section of chemistry but isn't certified in chemistry, students in that one section, that teacher is not highly qualified for that. That's what that means. Does that answer?
Yes.
That. And now, Mr. Wallingford.
Actually, could, before you go, could we get the, the criteria you talked about for the college readiness? Could we get that, please?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Wallingford, I like your tie.
Thank you very much. So it's maybe as easy to define what equitable use of funds is not. It is not providing the same amount of money to every student. The idea is to provide amounts of money to provide students with opportunities to, to be successful. So that's, that's, that's my short-
Say that again? I'm sorry, speaking of the mic.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me better now? Very good. So again, to answer your question, Mr. Trenum, equitable use of funds is not providing the same amount of money, is providing an amount of money that provides every student the same opportunity to be successful. It might be different amounts for different kinds of students. We can get into conversations about the allocations and the way we do that. But the idea is to produce, provide every student the opportunity to be very successful.
So is there a criteria that we use for that, or some sort of?
Well, what we do is every year, when we go through the budget process, we talk about what amounts we're allocating to different, for, to schools for different kinds of students. And we may change those based on suggestions that come from the Board, suggestions that come from staff. So that's, that's something that is not only once a year, but is ongoing kind of conversation.
Sure. I appreciate that. I guess for my concern, if this is going to be part of our strategic plan, and we're going to have a criteria or a goal for it, then we need, and we're going to have a measure for it. Because for me, I would say, well, obviously, we always equitably distribute our funds every year. We're perfect. But, so I was just curious if we have, like I said, a standard or a goal that we actually measure against that, and some criteria like that, or if it is more subjective in nature.
So one last thought. Everybody tries to get better every year in everything they do.
Sure.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Ms. Casada, just because this goes to the topic that Mr. Trenum asked, on this highly qualified teacher, do we have high schools, and I don't know if, Dr. Waltz, you might want to answer this question, or, or Mr. Malgu, but do we have high schools that have better rates of highly qualified teachers and lesser rates of highly qualified teachers?
Well, we're pretty much at the top, but I would ask Ms. White if she, I don't know if you need to get the exact information, but if you could approach the podium, please. And I think we're at 98% or 99%.
We are in the high 90s with highly qualified. Jennifer was correct that it's sometimes those one-offs, the one class you're teaching, not in your area of endorsement, that will lower that rate. But we track it carefully every year, and it's reported to every principal and associate, so we know exactly where we are as far as highly qualified teachers. But sometimes if there is not a teacher that's been hired for a position, or new classes are open, again, we might not be highly qualified in that particular class, but we're always working to get to 100%.
Do, do we have schools that are chronically having issues?
We don't have any really low schools. We have schools that are historically 100% more our elementary schools. But we've had middle schools and high schools at 100% too, and we acknowledge them for that.
I apologize, dumb question, but what makes a highly qualified elementary teacher?
Is that you're licensed and you're endorsed in a K6 or a K2 or a 3.5.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, Ms. Jesse.
I wanted to ask, when we reviewed the slides, there was a slide that was missing from your usual report, which is a slide that shows our relationship to other counties. And you said you were going to look at that. Is there a reason that it shows how we, how our performance?
Ms. Jesse, we went back and verified, that slide hasn't been part of the presentation for some time, and-
Yes, it has, sir. The slide I'm talking about, the slide that says that Stafford and these other schools are ranked higher than Prince William. I, I'm not here to make Prince William look bad, I'm not doing that. But you could have called me and said, "We're not going to use that slide. We've never used that slide." And I could have pulled Jennifer's reports to show those slides. But if you don't want to show that slide, that's fine.
No, I, I thought we had said that we believed that it was not used, and Jennifer has last-
Well, when I left, you said we could put it in. So that's fine. It's not here.
That might have been a miscommunication.
Okay. Could you find, could you look at that ranking and send that to me?
We can do that. Again, just to be clear, that's not part of the current strategic plan measure, but we can provide that information.
I, I would like to look at slide 17. I'd like to start with slide 17, please. I think as, as we go along in the next couple of years, I, when we say on-time graduation for English learners and the highest in the state, and we come up with something that says we're over 100%, I'd like for you to look at on-time graduation for African-Americans in Manassas Park. It says 100% on-time graduation. This, I, I have a real problem with this on-time graduation being used as a metric and how we use it. Because when we look at students and we look at others, at this on-time graduation, I find that there's a discrepancy in the on-time graduation and student performance. And so Prince William County is far exceeds Manassas Park in terms of performance, and I, I'm not here to compare. But I, I'm just asking that we kind of look away from trying to find one thing that puts us, it just appears that we're doing so much better than other counties. We come up with one measure on that. I'd also like to go back and look at the slides on where you did the comparisons, where we did the gap data. I think we started at, it may have been slide 10, was it slide 10? And looking at these gaps, when, is there, you know, Dr. Latif said, "Well, what have we done based on this particular slide?" Is there a way for us to maybe develop either SMART goals or, or to show data later after the strategic plan is? The strategic plan to me just says this is where we are in relationship to this plan. But as we look at this new Equity Committee, are we going to be, will that be our way of looking at the discrepancies in performance of these students and plans for improvement? Dr. Waltz, are one of you, is that, is that the plan?
It certainly would be logical that that would be one of the items that they would take up.
And when we look at slide 21, 21... The, the program participation at, is it me, or did we, did we show all students' participation and white student participation in these programs? Or was that, at the high school level, it's different? But it seems like there's a category missing here, or?
So the, the measure itself in the strategic plan looks at the participation of disadvantaged minority students, disadvantaged students, minority students, students with disabilities, and English learners. I referenced the overall number, just so you had a point of comparison, but those are the numbers that are in the measure. Same thing on the next slide, those are the groups that are there.
And I want to go back to the college readiness slide, and I think that is slide 19. When you go to Virginia Department of Education, they're still using the metric based on college readiness and SAT performance. And there's a letter from the State, Virginia State Department, and talks about this gap. I, I just don't want us to lose sight of the fact that SAT performance, although we're looking at different measures, I don't mind looking at that, but I really would like for us to look at the fact that our Hispanic students and their readiness based on SAT performance is something that we really do need to address.
Okay.
And that, can that, that's not a slide that we could put as a part of this plan because it's not a part of the plan?
The, I can tell you that the SAT news release that was done did include the SAT benchmark performance parallel to the state for Prince William County that broke it out. And we can send that reference to you, but that information has been published.
I'm very concerned about access to advanced programs for a variety of students. And I don't know if access, more access to the SAT would be a factor in making us have a higher or lesser score. But I, if that is a fact, then I think during the presentation, we need to maybe provide information on that. Because as I look at the SAT scores, we're not really where we'd like to be. And I think you, haven't you formed a committee for that, Dr. Waltz?
It's a process. Yes.
Yeah. I would, I would appreciate your doing that.
Teachers and administrators.
Okay. Thank you. And I want to thank- And I want to thank you again for your presentation, and I want to thank you for taking the time to meet with me and discuss my items of my concern. My items of concern are not just my items of concern, but I, I've just been very frustrated with this, where we show the data, we show the data, but we never come back and say, "Here's our plans for improvement." And I don't know how we do that. There was a time where we talked, talked about best practices, and we went to positively Prince William County, we moved away from that. But I think you said that the Equity Committees are going to show quarterly data points, is that correct? Am I right on that?
It's my understanding we're going to have a quarterly report.
Okay. And we're going to be looking at...
A quarter, I'm sorry, it's quarterly meetings.
Quarterly me, what is going to be reported?
Well, that will be something that the committee takes up.
But will it, when will it be publicly shared with the board?
Well, the initial meeting with the board will be this spring. It's not on an agenda yet, but it's targeted for spring.
Okay.
We've got to get the committee in, in its meetings and, and move them forward first.
And thank you. And I also want to compliment whoever put these slides together and did the data analysis. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Deutsch.
I think we're working on a new strategic plan next year, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I won't be here, so everybody have fun with it. But I think Item 21, there's a lot, there's a lot of good stuff going on and a lot of things well presented. Slide 21, I think, just reinforces a need for specificity in the goals that we set, because it states that participation in X categories, it will increase. Well, what, what constitutes an increase, what counts, there's no, there's no real specificity on that. And whether it's economically disadvantaged, minority, special education, ELL, economically disadvantaged, special ed or ELL, they're all basically flatlined over three years. So it doesn't look like we're actually doing it. But I think when the goals get written next year, there should be a level of specificity to actually know whether or not the goals are being hit.
Dr. Walts, yeah, Dr. Walts.
I'll wait until he's over his head.
Oh, no, so just on, on, on Mr. Deutsch's point, and I guess I can address this question to you. So I, I like this, so where you have the opportunity, you say participation is trending upward, and, and to his point, you know, it's, it's trending upward a little bit, but how, how do you get that higher? I mean, what are, what are we doing to do that? I mean, is that something we have to increase the spots of gifted program? So meaning, you know, currently the gifted program in the elementary school only accepts, you know, your starter sign-in program takes like 30. How do you increase participation? Do we, do we have 35 next year or 40? Or do you just let more of these kids into those just 30 slots and someone loses? I don't understand how that works.
I think that might be a discussion for another night, but, but a couple of things. For example, when we brought Mrs. Bailey up here into the office, one of her primary expectations was to help with the training of identifying non-traditional students in gifted, so she spent a tremendous amount of time going out and working with staff members with second language students and students of poverty in terms of increasing the identification. Something else that we've tried to do, I know when I first came here, we had small centers, and then we would transport a lot of kids to those centers for part of the day, and there was a tremendous amount of time lost in just transporting students. So as we've identified more, we've tried to make more school-based centers and open those up. So there's, there's not a limit. We have to fund that, obviously, in the budget, but we look at that every year.
So funding, funding can help increase those programs, correct?
Absolutely. Which, which is what I'm going to end on when everybody else has done, yes.
And Dr. Latif, I'm, I'm sorry, one of the things that was put into the budget was additional times when we're identifying students with the Negliary Test at different grade levels to catch students who may not, and that test has been shown to do well for those students who may not do well on other tests. So that's something that has been in the budget too, which is responsible, particularly at the middle school level, because of the increased opportunities for identification.
Yeah, well, so we'll go, yeah, just one quick one.
I just want to ask one question. It's been a, a long time since I've been doing this kind of work, but I, I just remember that there was this test called the COGAT, and on the COGAT, you have a verbal score and you have a math score. And when I was working at Potomac View, a lower-income school, we didn't have any kids in gifted ed. And I started looking at the non-verbal measure, and kids who didn't speak English or kids who had certain kinds of problems, came from lowering, you see a skew of the data. You would see 25, 25 percentile for reading, 25 percentile for math, but 90 percentile in that non-verbal measure. And that became a way of looking at kids differently. And I also think that we really need to look at the whole thing of how people see kids and their perceptions of their ability to learn at high levels. At the end of the day, is whether or not you perceive that certain groups of kids, and that's training, I guess, that Dr. Burgos, in her training, can really hit. But I think you've, you've got to look at whether or not, is, is, whether or not you really believe, is the efficacy, the big word, of course, is efficacy. Do you believe that this kid has the ability to learn at high levels? And I think that's something that's a nationwide problem. And I was just, I'm just looking for some goals and strategies and something in writing. I keep talking about SMART goals, but you have to have a measurable goal, and then you have to say how, and I think Ms., Mr. Delchus said the same thing, you got to have a goal, and then how do you get there, and then how long it's going to take to get there, and did we get there, and how do we know that we got there? Pretty simple. But I think we do that a lot in schools, because I see all the principals, they have those goals, but I don't see a lot of that at this level where we actually, we don't, we don't talk about where we were and where we're going. And I don't, I don't know how to tell you to do that, but I would just like to see more of that. Thank you for, and thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Wilk has a couple of questions. The, go ahead. A couple of quick requests, and don't worry.
You're good.
Discipline referrals, is it possible for us to get a breakdown by level, elementary, middle, high school?
Yes.
And is that data available publicly and what other school divisions have with that?
We can look at that to see, we can, discipline referrals are often very individualized, but we can look and see what we can find, but we can certainly break it down by level for you.
Okay, thank you. Teacher retention, one request might be just numbers of how many actual teachers leave us and go work either in Fairfax, Loudon, or Arlington schools. And then I'll just say about, so with the surveys ending with the UVA ones, we're going to go back to our own in-house ones?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Well, I guess we could talk about the budget, about doing an independent third-party climate survey for staff.
That, not that I know of yet, but...
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Ralston.
Just a simple question. How many times do the parents come to you and want to know what is this all about, what you have just given to us? Do they ever come and ask you and what it's going to do for their child?
So we get a couple of calls and questions about the plan report, because it gets published on the web, but it's often from staff members or people who are doing studies and things. The questions we get more often are information about specific schools, and we can point people to their school data profile that has a lot of information specific to an individual school performance and otherwise.
How many do you think you've talked to, say, last year?
About this report?
Either this report or any other reports that's telling them the direction that their kid is, you know, going in, and it's correct.
I'd say most of those questions go to the schools or the school leaders, yeah.
That's...
So that's a hard question for me to answer, I'm sorry.
Okay, great. Dr. Walts.
Thank you, Dr. Casada. I appreciate the work of you and your team and everyone involved in this. It's a lot of information, so thank you so much. Also, when you're collecting the information for Mr. Wilk, as terms of those people who left to go to other places, would, could we also see if we can track the data of those who come in from other systems?
Or once you come back.
We will work with HR on that.
Great. So this is absolutely perfect timing for the Washington Area School Board's most recent report that was just released, because when people talk about improving things, sometimes people forget that money is involved with these, and money in staffing. I'll give you one example. In the Fairfax County Public Schools, every single Title I school has at least one, and many of them have more than one, full-time instructional coach. So again, you're talking about a major amount of money. If you look at the professional development budget line in, in many higher-performing districts, that's something else to look at. But just leave you with a thought and a challenge, or I'll give you some, a fact and a challenge. At $11,875 per pupil, Prince William County Public Schools is $3,366 per pupil behind Loudon. $4,100, this is per year, $4,168 per pupil behind Fairfax County, $8,046 per pupil behind Arlington County. So if we funded at the rates of these nearby school divisions, we would receive additional revenue compared to Loudon of $307 million in one year. So class size might be something else to look at. If we compared to Fairfax, we would get $381 million more this year. If we look at Arlington, $736 million. Also, Prince William County Schools falls below the national per-pupil spending average of $12,201. That's the U.S. Census Bureau, May 2019. So the challenge that, that I would like to, to leave is I think it would be great to develop a few board goals as a part of next year's strategic plan, and one of them is a maj, is a measure that the school board secured additional funding to move us up to at least the WABE average. Thank you.
I want to thank you for sharing that, and I think that it's not always about money.
This one is...
Please, it's not always about money. I, I've looked at the WABE report, and there are schools that are like, starts with an A, and in Virginia, and the scores are poor, but they have high per-pupil expenditure. So I'm, I'm glad that you were not just tying it to money, because when you look at best practices, it's not always about money. But I was on a team that went to high-performing schools, and one of those high-performing schools that I attended, everyone had a coach in that building. Not only did they have a coach, they had a staff development person that worked with the teachers. And so as we look at our goals, it's not, I'm just saying that I want to caution us to not look just at money, but look at best practices, and best practices do cost money. But let's, let's align it with best practices, and thank you for sharing that.
Okay.
Excuse me, Chairman.
Thank you, guys. Oh, Mr. Trenum.
Thank you, I thank you, Dr. Walts. Mr. Wallingford, I would request, I'll follow on to this, if we could turn those dollar figures into what that equates to in tax rates and impacts on average tax bills as well, if you could provide that to the board. Thank you.
Where are we now? Excellent superintendent's time, Dr. Walts. And, and thank you for bringing up that WABE report. That was, by the way, if folks are interested, some of the similar numbers that Dr. Walts pointed out was in the SCOOP article titled, Mr. Guilfoyle, what was the article titled? It was in last Wednesday's SCOOP. Anyways, take a look at last week's SCOOP, and you'll see it as the third or fourth article down. It has the same numbers of what other counties are giving and the excess millions of dollars that we would get if we got the same level of funding. Thank you, Dr. Walts. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Latif, members of the board. Last month, I shared that we now have 12 schools who are recognized as Purple Star Schools for being military-friendly schools by demonstrating a major commitment to students and families connected with our nation's military. Since that time, one more school has been added, bringing our total to 13. Congratulations to Parkside Middle School for earning the Purple Star designation. Erin Merle, U.S. History and Civics teacher and Social Studies Department Chair at Pennington Traditional School, has been selected as the Virginia Middle Schools Association Master and the Middle Awards Teacher of the Year. This is Merle's seventh year teaching in Prince William County Schools. Congratulations to Ms. Merle. Lori Ann Pollak, current Assistant Principal at Cary Dale Elementary and former STEM teacher at Penn Elementary, has been recognized with the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching for the State of Virginia. The recognition comes with a $10,000 unrestricted award from the National Science Foundation. Natalia Ayala Torres, a senior at Woodbridge High School, recently served on a panel for the Speak Up Congressional Briefing. Natalia was invited to share her firsthand perspective on the role of technology in supporting a variety of learning experiences. I met Natalia just before the homecoming parade and had a chance to visit with her about this amazing experience. The Virginia Department of Education has awarded PWCS a total of $48,637 from the 2019 School Security Equipment Grant Program for the installation of school security equipment for Dale City Enterprise and Cary Dale Elementary Schools. Since 2013, PWCS has received more than $422,000 in grant funds from VDOE for security upgrades in schools across our division. Mike Pullam, art teacher at Forest Park High School, has been awarded the 2019 Kaiser Permanente Thriving Schools Honor Roll Award for his work with the Kaiser Permanente Youth in Action Program. Mr. Pullam is one of only 16 Honor Roll awardees in the United States. The Association of School Business Officials International, commonly known as ASBO, has recognized Prince William County Schools for excellence in budget presentation with a meritorious budget award for the 2019-2020 budget year. The award is given to divisions who recognize the importance of presenting a quality, easy-to-understand budget internally and to the community. In sharing the award with us, Molly Berry, Director of Recognition Programs for ASBO, said, quote, "The district has been participating in the MBA program for 23 years, a true reflection of the district's commitment to fiscal integrity," end quote. Congratulations to John Wallingford, Lisa Thorne, Kathleen Addison, and the finance staff for this outstanding recognition. And in closing, I would like to recognize Battlefield High School, who has recently been honored by four diamonds at Penn State's Children's Hospital for raising almost $48,000 through the school's minithon. The money raised supports life-saving research and world-class care for kids and families fighting childhood cancer. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walts. 19.01, report to the school board on the school-county joint CIP meeting with Ms. Williams. She's not, oh, oh, yes, Mr. Trenum.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to suggest that since it's Ms. Williams' item and she's not here, that we just defer it to the board.
Oh, excellent, fantastic, we'll do that. I, we'll move on to 1902. Neapsco District Appointment.
She said something, but that's fine.
Oh, did she, did she?
Well, that's, that's...
Do you want to read it?
No, I, I'll wait.
Okay. Yeah.
That committee, we met, and it was not a lot of significant information, so I'll wait for her to make that presentation.
Sure. And Neapsco District Appointment for the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity, is this, is this for, for action or not? Yes, it is an action item. Do I have a motion? Mr. Deutsch.
I move that Prince William County School Board approving the Neapsco District Appointment of Monique Ralston to the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Equity for a term effective number 1, 2019, through June 30th, 2021.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk?
A second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote a seven yes, one absent, motion passed.
1903, Revision Policy 810, Facilities Planning, First Reading.
Good evening.
Mr. Trowke.
Chairman Latif, members of the board, Dr. Walts. This is the first reading, which updates Policy 810, and this policy makes it consistent with our practice in bringing any new school prototype design or major modification to you for approval. you for approval.
Any questions, or, I mean, okay, outstanding, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic. So we have the VSBA Academy Awards. All right, hold on, this is something we do every year, apparently. All right, okay, folks, we're going to move through this pretty quickly. I will present the certificates individually each morning. Okay, school board members, devote many, many hours to serving our children, accomplishing all that they need to do as policymakers and funding authority for our school division. All board members, superintendents, clerks, deputy clerks, are automatically enrolled in the Virginia School Boards Association School Board Academy and earn certification points for participation in professional development. Tonight, on behalf of the Virginia School Boards Association, I am pleased to announce awards earned by our board members through the VSBA Academy for their commitment to effective school board governance. This level of recognition is based on the point values earned, on point values earned. And so, okay, we'll just go on to that then. Mr. Justin Wilk of the Potomac District has earned an award of recognition. Mr. Wilk, will you please come forward? Excellent. This is, oh, is this a picture, is this best dressed, or what are we giving him? I'm sorry, oh, no, sorry. Here we go, there you go, you can hold that up. How about if I take one? Yeah, you look old. Good, good luck with that.
Thank you, thank you.
Hold on, we have a lot of these up here today. Okay, to our senior member of the board, Mr. Gil Trenum, has earned an award of achievement and, and a bronze pin. Mr. Trenum, will you please come forward? Outstanding. There you go, my friend. Congratulations. Very good. Okay, all right, we're moving here now. Ms. Diane Ralston and Superintendent Dr. Stephen Waltz have earned an award of excellence and a silver pin. Ms. Ralston, will you please come forward?
Superintendent?
Let me do this picture for a second.
I'll be a lady tonight.
You look lovely today.
Thank you so much.
All right, excellent. Oh, yes, now, here we go. We should have a walk-up music, no? Where's Ms. Heebner? She's good with that stuff. All right. The, next, next. Ms. Lily, Mrs. Lily Jessie, Mrs. Allison Satterwhite, and Ms. Lori Williams have earned an award of honor and a gold pin. Will Ms. Lily Jessie please come forward?
Thank you.
There you go, my friend. Wow.
No money?
No, no cash in this audience. Our per-pupil, our per-pupil spending extends to our board member spending. No, no cash there. Next, we will move to, oh, Mrs. Allison Satterwhite, to receive her gold pin and award of honor. And she matches her gold pin tonight. Good, congratulations. And Ms. Williams is not here this evening, so we will, we will get that to her in soon. And congratulations to all of you, and thank you for your dedicated service to our Prince William community. Thank you.
And Ms. Calada, one more, please.
What's that?
Ma'am.
One more.
Ma'am.
Is it money? Oh, yes, yes, Dr. Waltz, please. I'm sorry, I didn't know, I thought you were just waving at me.
You are sleepy.
Feel like Saturday Night Live. Chairman Latif, on behalf of the Virginia School Boards Association, I am pleased to present you with an award of achievement and a bronze pin for your participation in professional development. On behalf of the school division, I thank you for your dedicated service to our county and commitment to providing a world-class education for all children in the Prince William County Public Schools.
Thank you, sir. All right. Okay, I have, and for, for our deputy clerk, Ms. B. Simpson, she will be getting an award of recognition. You'll just wave? Outstanding, okay, fantastic, great, and we can, we can do pictures later even, if you, how about a selfie? And we have also our clerk, Deborah Urban, will receive the Virginia School Boards Association Award of Recognition. Congratulations to both of you. Thank you for all your service, time, commitment, and energy in dealing with all of us, which is truly challenging. Next, we'll move on to board matters. We will start with Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will restate my rope. Ecclesiastes 3 states that for everything there is a season and a time for every matter under heaven. God also says that he raises up rulers and sets them down at his timing. And for the last four years, the season was for me to serve on the Prince William County School Board. Last night, we found out that that is not the season for me for the future. It's been an honor to serve the community for the last four years. I want to thank everyone in this room for your partnership, for the things we've accomplished together, and for what we've been able to accomplish. The encouragement, the kind words over the last two days have been incredible, and it's been the honor of a lifetime to serve. Not everyone can say that they lost a reelection campaign before they turned 30, and thank you to everyone who has reached out already. I look forward to celebrating my 30th birthday in a couple of weeks and seeking God's plan for the future. Thank you all.
I think, I have a slide, I think, and to, for Maria Burgos and Maquia Little, who were selected by the governor to be on his committee on African-American history education. Do we have that slide?
It's up.
Oh, I can't see it, thank you. Of course, we all know Maria Burgos, and she's sought after by various school systems and national organizations. She's a national presenter. Most of you may, you may remember Ms. Little. She was in the boardroom, she's from West Ridge, she had some concerns about multicultural education and history being taught in Prince William. And, you know, when parents come to the boardroom, it's always a good thing. And I remember that night, they said, "Your time is up," and she said, "You didn't, you didn't sign up." And she said, "I think I did," and she went over and got her name on the list and came up. But she's a very assertive young woman, and she is an extremely bright individual, and she's on that committee, so I want to congratulate them. Boy, do they look like they're posed for something there, and with the Secretary of Education, he just seems to be like...
Looks really cold.
Is he shivering? Thank you. Also, moving ahead, the pond issue at Old Bridge Estates. As you know, there's been some concern that our school, John Jenkins, has created some of the sediment and various elements at the pond at Old Bridge Estates. And I met with them, and I want to, just Dr. Mr. Mark Avini from Public Works Environmental Services, when Mr., when Al presented, he said to us that he didn't think it was all our fault, and today I went over, and there are just piles and piles of sand. After 20 years, that is not just a result of our building that school, but they are looking at those creeks and lines going into that pond, and they will be doing something to improve the, the release of sediment and various objects into that pond. So I want to just thank, I want to thank the Public Works Environmental Services for their quick, for the quick response, and also, I want to say that as a school system, facilities, we are on top of everything, and I think we do a really good job, so thank you very much. And for the, you know, I've been on this board for some time, and aren't elections wonderful? You just want them to be over, to be honest with you. And I just want to thank the people who voted for my return to this school board, and I want to particularly thank my husband and my family for supporting me and all the work that is done. I don't know if you have any idea how much work is involved when you're running for a school board appointment, but it was wonderful being at the polls and watching the turnout. I think we had a 45% voter turnout for this election, and I just want to thank all those members of the board who were elected, and I want to thank also Ms. Allison Satterwhite. It's been wonderful working with you, and I know you'll carry your notepads everywhere with you, because you keep copious notes, as they would say. And to Mr. Trenum, we've been together for quite some time, you're leaving, you left before the election, so, and to Willie, I just want to thank everyone who had the courage to run for these seats, because it does take a great deal of courage. Thank you very much.
Ms. Ralston.
Didn't know we could give thanks to them, but so, I'm gonna follow you on this one. I'd like to also thank those who helped me to get back here, the same thing. It's been a interesting travel piece, if this was a travel piece, to work here in this building. We just, you know, in my opinion, I think that maybe sometimes, Mr. Superintendent, maybe we can go outside when the weather is better and have the meeting. It's much, much, much better. So, I just think that right now, don't start laughing yet. Willie, thank you very much. Thank you. We'll wait for the last day, I know. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Trenum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try and be brief, but on Friday, I had the opportunity to join Brentsville as the football team actually won the first, won the district championship. It's been the first time in a long time, so there's a long time coming. They had a very nice ceremony, I really appreciate that, but I do want to provide one clarification, contrary to what the announcer said, when I went in 2016, when I was deployed, I did not deploy to Jumanji. That would have been really cool, but, but it was jabuti, but anyway, it was a lot of fun. I just want to thank everybody.
Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Trenum, I needed that laugh. I want to first thank Rosa Parks Elementary School, the students who provided us our be kind signs. These were really special, that was very nice. Also, had the privilege of attending VABOTA, the marching band assessment for the Northeast Region, at Patriot High School, was able to see our students from Colgan and from Battlefield perform, and absolutely outstanding performances by our students there. And as Mr. Deutsch said, there's a time for every purpose under heaven, and I'm going to try and get through this. I have dearly loved serving the Gainesville District for eight years as your school board member, and I'm going to miss all of you very much. And you will be in great hands with your new school board member, Ms. Jen Wall, who's here tonight. And just thank you so much, everybody, I've loved it. And I still have a month and a half left to visit schools and see everybody, yeah, basically a month and a half with the holiday, to visit schools and see everybody, and looking forward to getting to a couple of the Veterans Day programs, so thank you.
Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, Ms. Williams asked me to read a statement for her. She says, "First, my apologies for missing the meeting tonight, my youngest son had surgery this morning and is recovering well. I would like to thank each and every individual who participated in yesterday's election. Running for any level of public office is quite an undertaking, and all who choose this path deserve credit for doing so. Congratulations to all who were victorious. Thank you to my constituents for choosing me to continue to work for you." That was Ms. Williams, who's not here tonight, she'll be back at the next meeting. I too, I did do visits and went to a bunch of schools the last two weeks, but I do want to just quickly say, it's a blessing and honor, you know, for a long time, I, I kind of wavered back and forth if I was going to run again for another term, and ultimately, you know, with obviously a lot of deep thinking with God, my wife, my family, decided to run again, and that worked out great. And I want to thank the voters of Potomac for re-electing me. I think this is a service that you give back to the people, and it's about helping with constituent affairs, which I feel like is a passion of mine and something I'm very good, I think, at doing, so people remember that. People know when you're there for them, and they know when you're responding, and you're responsive, I should say, and you're out and about in the community. So it's an honor, you know, we'll add final comments to the departing members, Willie and Allison, at our last meeting, but it's an honor to serve with both of you and be a part of this board, so thank you all.
Okay, well, you know, running for office is incredibly challenging. It requires enormous courage. You put your name to your opinion, you don't hide in an anonymous spot. You stand up, and sometimes you make mistakes, and sometimes you get it right, and so I want to commend all of you, Mr. Deutsch, Mr. Trenum, Ms. Satterwhite, for serving with distinction over these many years. I have learned in the last 18 months an enormous amount about how to serve on this board from each of you, and, and I thank you for your kindness and your collegiality over the course of these last 18 months. I think we've all accomplished a lot, and I can't thank you enough, and I'm sure I'll be happy to speak more to that. I want to recognize Jennifer Wall, if she's still in the room. She is the, please stand up, the new school board member-elect from the Gainesville District. Please give her a round of applause. Ms. Lisa Zargarpore, please stand up, school board-elect, Coles District. And I think we had Adele Jackson, but she's, she may have left, school board, elect school board member-elect of the Brentsville District. Please give her a round of applause in abstention. She had to leave early. I want to comment, I mean, it, this is probably the least glamorous job in, in politics. There's not a whole lot of thank yous, and so thank you for, for running, and I want to commend all of the school board members who ran, they attended these meetings for the last two months and showed up here and, and went through this with each of us, and I think Prince William County will truly be greatly served by these new members who have just shown an enormous interest and commitment to our, our students, our staff, and our community. So I want to thank you all for stepping up and doing something that I think requires enormous courage. So thank you all very much. Dr. Waltz, I think that WABE report is important, I have echoed these comments. The discussion that we had this evening on our, on our statistics, on our ACT and our SAT scores is an important discussion. I want to commend our staff, Jennifer Casada and everyone for putting together that report. I want to commend our principals, our teachers, and our students for always trying and doing better each year. Any discussion isn't in my part to bash anyone over the head for what we've not been able to accomplish, but rather, in the superintendent's words, look for opportunity. to accomplish, but rather, in the superintendent's words, look for opportunities for growth. We have delivered in Prince William County maybe the best product in Northern Virginia. And when I ask about benchmarking, I will tell you that our results come with the lowest per pupil dollar spending. If you can increase that per pupil dollar spending even a little bit, even modestly, I have no doubt that the folks in this room, our principals, our teachers, can have a return on investment that will have enormous multiples to that $1. It is shown over and over again in studies that a dollar invested in education has enormous multiplying effect. And our school division has shown that over time, and that is a credit to Mrs. Satterwhite, to Gil Trenum, to Willie Deutsch, and to this board that I had the honor to serve with for the last 18 months. And so, I don't want anyone to leave after this election and think that nothing, you know, that, 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 I'd rather, I want everyone to remember the work that these folks have done and the legacy they left is part of this enormous task of running the 35th largest school system at probably one of the most efficient dollar amounts. And that is not easy, and when we have these discussions, I don't want folks to feel bad, if you're watching from home, if you're a teacher or principal. These are all for, as a superintendent, in his own words, talks, the opportunity for growth. We have to look at it that way. And so I appreciate it, and I thank all of you, and have a wonderful evening.